Welcome to the November 3rd, 2014 Long Metal Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of quick announcements we'll make. I want to remind everybody tomorrow's election day. The polls should be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And this weekend, we have the Wounded Warrior Race taking place from the Greenwood Center. And if you haven't heard about it, you can call the center and talk to the Veterans Agent, get more information on it. I think last year, what, we had 500 people, Stephen?
More than that.
Yeah, it was a very large event last year. We're anticipating a fantastic event this year.
We're just going to follow up for voting tomorrow.
A portion of Long Metal Street that's directly in front of the community house is going to be one way to allow for additional parking. So if people are approaching the polling place, just bear in mind that the traffic pattern's a little different.
Okay, good. So it's heading north?
I don't know if you know which direction it's heading in, but it's heading north. I think it's heading north, yeah.
Likely north, yeah. Okay, thank you, Stephen. We've got to change our agenda around a little bit tonight. I think we're going to start with our discussion on the Blinn Tennis Courts. We had our attorney, and he came in early. That's the reason we started our meeting at 6:00 o'clock. Dave, would you like to come on up and take the thing? As most of you remember from our last meeting, there was a little discussion. We postponed an item or drifted it into the future until this meeting to talk about it. I'd like to start to get the issue on the table. I'd like to start, somebody will give me a motion to place the Blinn Tennis Courts on the warrant.
I move to place the Blinn Tennis Courts on the warrant.
Is there a second?
Oh, second discussion.
Okay, fine. Then we are in discussion. I guess there had been, a lot of information's gone over the dam since we last met. I guess there was talk in there, and it seemed to be that there was a conversation that developed between you, Dave, and Alex, dealing with the, how the process works, how our community preservation project is actually put on the warrant. And I understand there's been some correspondence from that. I know I've done some research since that. I've talked to Mr. Wise about it. Seems like we're fairly straightforward on how this process takes place, but that's the purpose of this open part right now, is I guess to vet this out so everybody's aware of how it works.
Sure. First of all, I want to thank the board for accommodating my request that you start at 6:00 o'clock, because I had to attend a planning board hearing in Hamden. The irony of it is, I got a call this afternoon around 3:00 o'clock that they had failed to properly post the notice of the Hamden hearing.
We'll leave it until 7:00.
Right, that's right. So, thank you for accommodating me, and I'll be happy to stick around for when the moderator comes in and you talk about the warrant later in the evening. Yeah, I've read Alex's memo, which was a very scholarly analysis, if I do say so, of statutory interpretation of the use of the interaction of the Community Preservation Act and the provisions of Chapter 39, Section 10, with respect to the select board's control of the warrant. As we discussed the last time, and as Mr. Grant brought out in his memorandum, the word "shall" appears in the Community Preservation Act in the context of the Community Preservation Committee, shall make recommendations to the legislative body, which, as we chatted about the last time, is the town meeting in a town. And that has to do with projects that are to be funded with CPA money. Alex acknowledged in his memo that the Community Preservation Committee is entitled to a great deal of deference, using his words, as to CPC articles that should be put on the warrant, and that unless there are serious questions about the worthiness of a particular project, it ought to go on the warrant. I'm not going to tell you tonight, based on my looking at the statute and talking to someone from my office, talked to a lawyer in the Department of Revenue, which has not issued an official ruling on this question, but has acknowledged that there is no requirement in the CPC to put these articles on the warrant. So I'm not going to tell you that the use of the word "shall" in the Community Preservation Act rises to the same level as the use of the word "shall" in Chapter 39, Section 10, having to do with your obligation to place on the warrant petition articles that are supported by the requisite number of signatures, be it for a special or an annual town meeting. I think that, notwithstanding what I just said, I think the use of the word "shall" in the Community Preservation Act does evidence a strong bias towards bringing these articles before the town meeting for a vote. And I guess for 300 years, entrusting those decisions on what to do to the town meeting has served the town well. But again, I can't tell you definitively that you are under the same obligation to place a Community Preservation Act article on the warrant as you would be if a petition was presented to you with the correct number of signatures. I think there are strong policy reasons for doing that, but I'm, you know, talking more as a political scientist than a lawyer when I say that there is strong policy reasons for accommodating the projects that have been vetted by the Community Preservation Commission, Committee. So, that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Dave. Any board members have any questions?
Dave, you just mentioned that in speaking, someone from your firm speaking with someone at the DOR.
Yes, someone, while I was away, someone from my office talked to an attorney in the Department of Revenue, and they have not issued a definitive ruling on this. They do issue letter rulings on various local government financial matters, but they, I'm told, they haven't done that here, and was told informally by a lawyer in the Department of Revenue that there is no ironclad requirement that you put those articles on the warrant.
You know, and I just want to say, at the last meeting, the chair gave the board the option of not having a vote on the article and just leaving it for discussion tonight to let you do some research and so forth, and also go back and forth with Alex a little bit. And unfortunately, there was a motion made to put it on the agenda, or on the warrant, and it failed. And, you know, I, here's where, I just want the board to know where I stand. I don't support this article because I don't think that it's been vetted. I don't believe, you can't, I don't believe you can have almost a 70% cost escalation from one year to the next, but it sounds like when we voted not to put the article on to, I believe it was for the, it obviously sounds like we probably erred on that one as well.
Well, I, Alex mentioned in his memo that there have been prior instances where the decision was made not to put a Community Preservation Committee article on the warrant. I'm not saying that didn't happen, but I just wasn't involved in this.
Oh, no, I know, you're right. I'm just saying that it sounds like we erred on that as well.
By not putting it on the warrant?
By voting not to put on the warrant, so.
Well, I'm not ready to say you made a mistake. I'm just simply saying that I think a strong argument can be made for putting those articles on the warrant, and Alex is of a slightly different mind.
What I want to say is that although I don't agree to put it on, I don't agree with it at all, and I'm going to vote against it, my suggestion is let it go to the floor at town meeting, and vote to put it on the article, put it on the warrant, and let it go. And I think, quite frankly, what it shows is, I think the select board and the CPC actually need to have better communication going forward, and I mean that sincerely, that I think we need to be in lockstep with articles that are put up there, whether we agree with them or not, that we have a core understanding between our two committees, that we understand all the nuances of it. But I'm going to vote to put it on the warrant and let the town decide what to do with it.
Any other discussion?
Let me just say, part of the reason why I took the time to look into this analysis, because I thought it was an important issue about the select board's authority, and if we were to acknowledge the requirement to put certain things on the warrant, that that could have consequences down the road. And I think the analysis that I provided for the CPC articles is similar to the one that we were discussing last time about the zoning article. I think it's an important issue about what exactly we're required to do, which is include citizen petitions, and then those are the things that we can actually discuss and decide based on the merits of it. It seems, I think Mr. Martel and I are actually in more or less an agreement that there's not a legal requirement, but very sound reasons as a political scientist, as a matter of policy, to include CPC articles. I voted for all of the CPC articles last year when I was running for select board. I criticized not including CPC articles because of the, and I think this is the right word, deference owed to the CPC, because frankly, they're spending more time on those projects and vetting them and carefully looking at them. So, I, you know, so the only reason why I brought this up and sort of, kind of made the issue kind of pointed, is because I thought the question of the select board's authority was an important one going forward. And I have severe reservations, not with the project, so, but the execution of the project, because I want to see those tennis courts built. I have no problem with the scope of it. I just think there's a very good chance that we can get it done at the original price. So I'm going to be voting to include it on the warrant. And I think frankly, the kind of discussion that Paul and I are having and everybody else is having is the one that we need to be having, not that we just have to put it on there or we don't, to really be thinking about it on the merits.
I'll add my comments to those of Paul and Alex for the same reasons. I, in fact, was the person who in the past had opposed and voted and initiated a vote against the CPC project on the warrant, and I appreciate Alex's comments about maintaining the authority of the select board, and it is important. I think the people in the town, in this case, probably ought to speak on whether they want to spend this kind of money on the tennis courts, and I'm certainly willing to let it, in this case, let it go to the town meeting and see how they want to vote. Again, I think it'll get a fair airing at town meeting, and it will get voted for or against, depending on who the people.
Right.
And I'm going to vote for us to put it on the warrant like I, my position was before. And the reason is, we have to show the respect of the work that the CPC has done, and also, I think, the intent of the statute. And the intent of the statute is, this is not general funds money, it's CPC, it's independently decided by the committee. And for us to look at the balance of power, the authority of the board against each committee as we go forward, I don't believe the warrant is the place to do that. I believe if you really want to have that discussion, it should be a town-wide discussion by a charter committee or commission, whichever way you want to go. And for us to say what we want to analyze every single thing according to the authority of the board, I don't agree with. I believe you need to look at the authority of town meeting, the authority of the committees, the authority of this board, and the authority of the town manager and employees. And it's a big discussion we do need to have. And that's why, instead of taking time and of each of these select board meetings and ripping apart everything in front of us to see where the balance of power is, I believe it should be done in a town-wide committee or form where we really get to the meat of that. And it's probably a discussion we should have had years ago when, after the charter came. But I do think at this point in time, I would be very happy to see it on the warrant and go in front of the legislative branch.
Any other comments? Dave, thank you.
Okay.
Alex, thank you. I think you made a very thorough report. I did a lot of phone calling around, but I'm not going to waste anybody's time with that, because I basically found out everything that's been said in this file.
Okay, thank you.
It's a mirror of what it is. The intent, the spirit of it is one thing, but the intent and all that, so. No other discussion? I call a question. All in favor?
Of what? Article seven?
Yeah. Article eight to be put on the warrant, the Blinn Tennis Court. All opposed? Thank you, Dave. So you're going to wait for the moderator?
I'm going to wait for the moderator to come around.
We're going to go back to regular, yeah, I'm going back to regular agenda. I'm going back to regular agenda now. Do we have any resident comments?
Yes.
Come on, Jim.
Jim Russell, 108 Bel Air Drive, Long Meadow. I'd like to take this opportunity on behalf of the Board of Park Commissioners to sincerely thank the select board for reconsidering this article. And yes, I believe that the residents of town will have an opportunity to weigh in, and if they want it, so be it. If they don't want it, so be it. So again, my sincere thanks to all of you, gentlemen and lady, and continued success.
Any other resident comments? No. Select board comments. Go ahead.
I have just a question, and it's, we had in our packet under correspondence, something that didn't look like much correspondence to me. It was, it was a letter, but it wasn't addressed to us about Southampton and DOR.
Right.
And how did that get to our packet and why?
Marie had requested it be put in.
I thought it was an interesting educational article to send it to the board individually. I thought it might be an opinion, people might consider it my personal opinion. So I gave it to the chair and asked him if he wanted to pass it. It's just a news article.
That's fine. I just didn't know where the heck it came from.
And what that article demonstrated, which was interesting, it's a small, very small town that has growing pains, and they're ready to do a charter and a lot of things, so they.
And it was discussion of the use of free cash and what is really considered appropriate budgeting, and I just thought it was an interesting analysis. It doesn't relate directly to our town, but I wanted to pass that without being inappropriate with the meeting law.
A fledgling government is going to get better.
Yes.
Didn't know where it came from.
Any other select board comments? Alex?
You know, I don't know if any of you all on the board were driving home Thursday evening, but we had this massive traffic jam. Mark is nodding his head, you know what I'm talking about.
Long Metal Street where they were digging it up?
Yes, so.
There's a plate there now.
Yeah, so I rolled through probably 5:45, 6:00 o'clock, and what had happened was there was some repair work being done fairly close to the intersection of Forest Glen and Long Meadow Street, such that one lane going north was blocked, which meant that you had to alternate between southbound and northbound traffic. That caused a backup of going, of southbound traffic coming off of the off-ramp. Actually, I'm hoping he.
I think he's gone out to see if Mike's still up there.
Okay, I'm hoping, I'm hoping he can hear this. So, what that did was it backed up traffic on the off-ramp, all the way back to I-91, to the point that one of the lanes of I-91 was blocked, which that in turn backed up I-91 through Springfield. So, our little, and by the way, when I drove by it, nobody was working, okay? There was a police officer there, but nobody was working. So, we single-handedly caused a regional traffic jam by that one little project there. And I'm not, I don't know, I saw some sign that said utility. So it could be that we have, we had nothing to do with it, but even if it is a utility, I would suggest that when we see a project going on in a place like that, that we are on top of the utility? I mean, that added probably 10 or 15 minutes to my time driving from Springfield to Long Meadow, and of course, everybody else. I mean, the, if you think about the value of people's time, I mean, that was like tens of thousands of dollars, you know, of everybody's time and inconvenience. And it seems to me that we, as a town, at a minimum, have the right to sort of be on top of that utility, asking them, you know, how long, when are you going to stop it? Are there alternatives to doing it during rush hour? Because frankly, that was a real problem for a town residence, and it seemed needless to me. So, and again, you know, I'm not necessarily saying that we can totally prevent it, but I would think we could mitigate it in the future, because that not only affected our town, but affected the whole region. And it was this one little blockage at a very critical point.
Okay. Any other comments?
I wasn't going to comment on the traffic, but that's why I don't work in downtown Springfield. There's a couple of things. One, I just wanted to pass on my condolences to the Meth family. Dr. Bruce Meth, who was a veteran, passed away unexpectedly last week, and Bruce served on a, the head of the ICU in a floating naval hospital ship during the first part of the Gulf War, and I just wanted to express my condolences, because he's a great guy and a good community member. Secondly, I just want to congratulate the Long Meadow High School football team, which beat Minichog to end their season 8-0 before going into playoffs. We will have, the first playoff game will be Friday night here at the stadium against Minichog. Ironically, they play them again because they're the four seed, so just thought it was a good thing. My son plays football, so you know, that's why I've mentioned it, but sorry, everybody doesn't email or put it on Mass Live, that's because his son plays football, so he does, and they won, and they're going to play again on Friday. So congratulations to them, they put on a good, put in a good year undefeated so far.
Is that it, Paul?
That's it.
Anyone else? Quiet crew tonight. Town manager report.
I don't want to disturb the peace and tranquility as well.
It's quiet. Float lightly.
I think we just go to motion to adjourn.
I think we're going up to about 7:00.
Just, all we need is your signatures so we can get this warrant thing taken care of. No, the report today, just two fun items. There's going to be a new shed for the swap shop, and, you know, I'm down there quite a bit, especially in the summer, you know, grass clippings and that stuff, and I am not ashamed to say that there are several items in my house that are, that I got from the swap shop, and there are a few items in other people's houses that they took from me. But it is, it's kind of a neat, somewhat counterintuitive community asset having that. It does to some extent create additional work for our department, because their, people's definition of what's still good to go in the swap shop is highly subjective, and so a lot of the stuff unfortunately does end up having to be processed by DPW employees and it'd have been dumpster. But the shelter, if you can even call it that, that is currently, is a home to the swap shop, is obviously not, does not protect the stuff from the elements or anything else. So, Republic Services, nay Allied Waste, has donated from their community development, or their community outreach funds, about 10 grand to purchase a new shed that will have, that will be ADA accessible, and that's being installed, I think, this weekend, right?
It was delivered today.
Oh, it was delivered today. So that's kind of a fun item, so we look forward to filling it up with more other people's junk, and.
Stephen, if I could just, I think it's just an adjustment. As part of the contract with Allied Waste, there is a requirement that they make available to the town, I believe it's $2,500, but it might be a little bit more money per year to be used by the town as the, as recommended by our recycling commission, that could be used, and part of it's been used for our hazardous waste days and for other things. The contract is expiring at the end of this year, and this is money's coming from that. So it was actually negotiated, negotiate, I mean, Allied's been great and all, but they're not throwing this out of the kindness of their heart as part of the negotiating contract with the town. So I just wanted to make sure people are aware of that.
Similarly, the community funds are built into the contracts. Covanta, who is our disposal contractor, has the same thing. They have a community, based on tons, they give a little payout each year to do programming and things. That's right, Mark is right. And then on Thursday, there's a reception at the adult center from 12:15 to 1:00 to introduce our new executive director, Amy Sada, to the community, so if people are around, be welcome to join. And I do want to confirm, Alex, that that was utility work, because I got stuck in the same traffic jam, and it was about the same time, and thought Jesus is obviously outside the norm of when we typically do one of our own jobs, and I think it was gas company. So I'll, I can get more information on that, but yeah, it was utility work. And unfortunately, as much as I'd like to tell you that it's easy to be on top of the utility companies and get them to work around our schedule, it's not that easy. So we'll, we'll look into that, though. I agree with you, it was a bad, it was a bad time and a bad place to do that job.
Can I just ask a question? Do they, you know, we get from time to time, from about monthly, that report of road dig, I don't even know what it's called, but where they dig into roads when people want to put in gas and convert their homes and stuff. For an emergency like that, do they still have to get a digging permit or a authority? And what?
They just left.
What rights do we, do we have to say, I mean, clearly, if there's a gas leak, you're not going to say no, but to say, yes, but, that you need to, you know, reroute traffic rather than just stop it or put in, I mean, can we set conditions for them digging up the road to some degree?
Not that I've ever experienced.
Can we try to?
We can try. In fact, we had, you know, we have, once we do a road, we have a five-year moratorium on digging back into it. And we work close with the utility companies in advance of that work.
Right.
So they can plan ahead. And there was a time where prim roads, they were going to do some additional work on prim roads, and it wasn't needed necessarily, but something they wanted to do, and we pushed back hard on them, and they, they relented. But that's the exception. Typically, they.
Before you got here, we've had the same thing with other roads, where literally the month after we repaved and redid the roads, somebody came in and said they want, it was a house conversion to gas, and we said no.
Yeah, I mean, there's a legal research project, it's a, because I know only in practice that the utilities have pretty broad authority to work in the streets, even though they can get, they need.
We've got to be able to tell them.
And things like that, but.
Here's what you've got to do, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, though, they're, what they'll tell you is that it's the rate payers who end up suffering, and that's kind of the leverage that they hold, so. But like I said, we'll look, we'll look into that. And that's all I have.
Okay.
I'd like to move the consent agenda approval.
Second?
Second.
Second, discussion? I have one question. Are they going to use a generator, or are they going to run a power cord? Or do you know? I mean, it's just a question.
I think they run a cord, or, I don't, I know that there is an electrical inspection that needs to be done as a part of this. I don't recall off the top of my head if it was from a generator, if they were going to run power from the community house. I thought they ran power out of the community house.
Yeah, it's funny.
They did in the past.
Yeah, I thought they had a generator last year. Is there a reason why they can't put it on the other side of the green where there is power? Just a question?
I think they, well, because they closed the road, and it's just a one-block cycle to close the road.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And they have the animals there, and they can, they can stage their vehicles.
Yeah, it's likely more convenient, I'd say.
Last year, the animals were ran out, so I haven't actually seen the husbandry happen then.
Yeah, I need to, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Can I just make one comment, and not that's voted on? Because, you know, you can't discuss, obviously, this consent agenda, but on there, there was an application, but there was no signature from the party applying, at least on the electronic copy. It just said, who was applying? The Grace, the Grace Church, but it didn't have a signature of someone there. I saw the chief's signature on it as recommending it. And the only thing, it's just a comment, that if we have that going forward, I would just like to see, you know, a human being's signature on there, because while the church is an entity, and that's who we're granting it to, it doesn't give us, the town, anybody in terms of a contact point if something were to happen or whatever.
Barry, our Parks and Rec Director, Barry Jarvis, did submit a memo explaining, I think, I think they've been doing this for a long time.
Oh, no, I know that, but I mean, there was, the applicant was an entity, but there was still no person. But I mean, there was, the applicant was a, was an entity, but there was still no person's signature on it. It didn't say, it didn't say Joe Smith representing, you know, Grace Church or something. And I just thought that was odd, because if it was a homeowner requesting a block, a street shutdown, they would have to sign their name on it. And that, it's just a comment, it's not a...
And I realize it's a consent agenda, but anytime you desire, we'll waive the rules and add discussion, Paul.
The, I guess Stephen will leave the town moderator. Gets here, we'll go into new business. Set, assign special town meeting warrant?
That requires the...
Motion is dismissed.
Okay. We don't want to discuss that first before we do that?
I guess my...
Leave it to the moderator.
I mean, the time comes here, but I mean, all the articles have been now approved. And so it would be as amended, sent or I guess not as amended. But now that the Blinn article's back on, it's, all the other articles were already said. So it is essentially what is in your packet, except the strike through will be removed before the articles, before the warrant is posted by the constable. So it's just approving what's now been approved by the board and putting the signatures on it.
What do you think, Mark?
Fine with me.
Want to leave it so we can amend it or something?
No.
Okay, accept a motion to approve the warrant? You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Not for me.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, second for discussion. Do you want to leave this item until we have them? We'll vote on it after it comes in. We can stop it right now.
No, in general, the discussion with the, with the moderator is really, you know, just going through them, explaining it to him, seeing what we anticipate as any, any issues that may arise. But I can't imagine we're going to change this based on our discussion with the moderator. We've rarely done that.
Yeah, we can reopen it even if we have to, as long as we have them signed.
Okay, all in favor?
Murray made a motion.
All opposed? Yeah, Paul said.
No, I did not second it.
No, excuse me, not second. Mark second.
I seconded it.
Oh, I said my man.
Four to one.
Four to one.
Okay, holiday trash amnesty program consideration.
I would move that we accept the recommendation of the holiday trash amnesty as presented.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Go ahead, Ms. Cole.
I took a look at the, at the calendar, and this calendar's, this year was a little strange with Christmas falling on Thursday. And so we're not going to have trash collection on Thursday, but we will have it Friday, Saturday of that week. And obviously, it's the 25th. And what we're proposing is, so anybody who, the intent was if you generate excess amount of trash during the holidays, which is, that you have the trash collection period right after that, that you can use a little bit extra. So that means people whose trash collection would have been Thursday, the 25th, or Friday, the 26th, really have now got to wait until the second or third. As opposed to, they could just wait till the 26th or 27th, just wait a day. If we made, so I just went through the calendar. If we made the amnesty week the 21st and the 28th, instead of the week of the 28th and the 4th, which is, those are the Sundays.
We, you're right, that is a reflection of the awkwardness of having trash collection put into, pushed into a Saturday.
Right.
The trash amnesty dates are usually two full weeks. But I'm told by Director Public Works that if you put an extra bag out on that Saturday, that it will, they will, they will start picking stuff up early. But it just, just typically, we advertise for two full weeks, say. And so we want to start the full week on Monday. But I think if people put it out on the, on the first Saturday, it'll get taken, it'll get taken up.
That just gets a little, you know, I was just looking at this and saying, it ends up, by the 9th and 10th of January, not many people care, but they'd probably rather have, I mean, that's why I was thinking, if we did it the week of the 22nd and the 29th, that gives, you know, I mean, I, my house generally doesn't have a lot of trash, but I know that those that, those that do might prefer to have it that Friday and Saturday. And I just offer that if anybody cares.
We don't care.
Well, I don't disagree with you. I mean, if you're going to have trash on...
The day after Christmas, right.
...Christmas Day, and, you know, it would make sense that, because if you have that, the intent is that if you have that extra bags worth of trash, which we anticipate people have, and that's why we're doing this.
Right.
That it'd be picked up, like you said, that the very next, I mean, they're really, it doesn't make a difference to, it's just notifying Allied Waste. That's all we have to do, I would imagine.
Right. I mean, in theory, we could do it the, you know, the 26th through the 8th, which is two weeks, but not two full, yeah, it just gets it nasty for the collection people. But I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that people who, you know, the day after Christmas have all this trash, and they got to hold on to it for a week to get to the amnesty, that's all.
That's right. Because it's amnesty for trash.
Well, get to the allowance to have to...
It will be picked up. I mean, people put it out, it'll be picked up. I mean, we can change the advertisement, we can change the dates.
Yeah, I mean, we don't really care.
I think that's when people are expecting it, is the day after the holidays and that weekend. So I think your idea makes sense, Mark.
It's your folks who party hearty on New Year's Eve.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'd like to move that we have a trash amnesty go from Friday, December 26th through Saturday, January 10th.
Second.
Stephen, that, what that, what that does, Stephen, is makes legal what you just said there is going to, they could do anyway.
Do you have a warrant?
No, that's not an amendment. That's the motion. Did somebody move to approve this?
I just, I seconded it.
Oh, Paul did?
I made a motion to accept this.
Okay.
Right, so this is an amendment.
So I'm offering an amendment to make it from Friday, December 26th through Saturday, January 10th.
And I believe Paul you seconded.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Paul seconded. And any discussion on the amendment? See, no discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Now we have to...
Now we'll have to come back to the, to the main question, if we're going to have amnesty period. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? All opposed?
Four to one.
Four to one.
Okay. How about if we move on to this residential exemption presentation? Next up.
You ready?
Sure.
We had to twist this around to come here tonight.
He said you weren't going to use that.
I said I was going to. That's gold.
He said no, he said it's gold.
Just by way of introduction, I'm the public player, the assistant, the principal assessor. And about this time last year, we came to the board, the assessors came to the select board with the classification hearing. And the question came up as to just what is the residential exemption and how it would apply to Long Meadow. Interestingly enough, I was elected an assessor on the board in 1994. And then I was hired as the principal assessor. And in that 20-year period, no one has ever asked how this would apply to the residents here in Long Meadow. And the night that the question came up, we understood the concept, but we hadn't been prepared with the facts and figures and the mathematics of just exactly how this would take place. So I think that's, that's the reason I'm here this evening. I prepared this short time, well, a few months after the meeting last November. And I prepared most of this for Paul Pasturzic, the finance director, so that he and I could go over it and answer any questions that the select board had. So quite fortuitously, back about two weeks ago, October 16th, and I don't know if the board, I guess this publication, City in Town, this is put out by the Department of Revenue. And one of the articles in the publication had to do with the residential exemption. So what I'd like to do, in order to be concise, is I'd just like to highlight a couple of points from that article. And then as questions come up, I mean, feel free to interrupt. And then I'll go over some of the application of the residential exemption. And then whatever discussion takes place. So this, this article was written by the deputy director of the Bureau of Accounts of the Department of Revenue. And let me just read the first paragraph. "The residential exemption under Mass General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5C is a not oftentimes voted provision of the 1979 classification law that shifts the burden within the residential class from, one, lower-value properties to the higher-value properties and from, and to those owned by non-residents." This is something that can be voted at any time by the select board. It usually comes up at about the time of the classification. And like I said, generally, we've just said that there's this availability of this local adoption, and we, we've never really got into the, the depth of how this applies. What it does is it allows up to 20% of the average assessed value of the residential property. So residential property would, their values would be reduced by up to 20%. At the present time, there are 13 communities out of the 351 in Massachusetts that have adopted this provision. And these communities are characterized as large cities and towns with many non-owner-occupied properties, such as apartment buildings or investment properties, and/or resort communities with many seasonal residents. So that's kind of just a recap of what the residential exemption is. The way it works is right now, based on last year's approved values, we have about $1,800,800 in the residential value. In that, in the residential category, and when I say residential, we're excluding commercial and industrial and personal property. But residential also includes apartment buildings. So a lot of times, myself and other people think of residential as single-family. It's not just that category. But in any event, the residential value of $1.8 billion divided by the 5,600 parcels results in an average residential value of about $325,000. So what we're allowed to do is we can take up to 20% of that average value. So in effect, $65,000 in value can be deducted from all the qualified residential properties. Now, the, the real difficulty in this is coming up with how many properties qualify. The qualifying properties are those that are owner-occupied. So just to work the figures, I researched my database and I looked at how many properties were receiving their bills at addresses other than Long Meadow. And I came up with an estimate for this, for these calculations of about 450 people that would not qualify. And I say people, I, properties, residential properties. So what this means is the remaining 5,200 residential properties would receive the $65,000 exemption. This results in, in an exemption of $340 million. The result of a reduction in value is the residential category still has to generate $42 million in property taxes. That's, that's the residential share. For example, the total revenue from property taxes last year was 45 million. The residential share was 42.8 million. The 42.8 million, $42.8 million divided by a lower residential value has the effect of changing the tax rate from the 2315 that was approved to 28, 2838. So basically, a $5 increase. And that $5 increase in the tax rate applies to all residential property. So you would have a $28 tax rate for residential, and you'd still have the $23 tax rate for the commercial, unless you went the next step and voted for a split tax rate. And I, and I did some of those calculations that I had submitted to Paul, and I think he forwarded, forwarded that information to you. So what does, how does this affect everyone? If, if your value is below approximately $354,000, your assessed value, you receive a tax bill that is lower than it would be without the residential exemption. So for example, if your value is $350,000, your taxes with the exemption would be $19 If you happen to be right at the $354,000 value, there would be no net, the net effect would be zero. The higher rate is offset by the lower value. Now, above that, anyone whose value is over the $354,000 would start paying a higher tax because of the higher tax rate. So the higher-value properties and the non-owner-occupied properties would pick up, make up the difference for the lower-value properties who are getting a reduced tax bill. And isn't that exciting? If you have any questions, if you happen to answer them? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
When you talked about non-owner-occupied, but you also mentioned non-resident. So the people that have now declared residency in Florida and they still have a home in Long Meadow, would they be considered non-residents or non-owner-occupied?
We would have to vet those properties and see where their domicile is. And there's a whole procedure as to, the board, the assessors would have to make, have a policy as to how they would qualify people as being domiciled. Long Meadow, you know, resident, domicile resident. So if they voted in Florida, they would pay the higher tax. And the administration of this is really where it becomes difficult. Conceptually, it's just mathematical calculations.
Also, my understanding is we're getting near at the top of our rate, which we can, property tax rate. Does this bring us anywhere closer to that, or?
No.
It doesn't? Okay.
The, the residential, it's just, the residential class would, would pay, would, would have a, a, a lower, they still would have, would be responsible for the $42 million in taxes. The total is the same, the total that the town can raise is still determined by 2.5% of the prior year's level. This is just saying, you and I go out to dinner, the bill's $100, I elect to have you pay $75. It's essentially that. The bill's still $100. If...
Comments?
I mean, I'm looking this, so I understand the math and the break-even point. I mean, I can imagine there's a way that you could do it so that nobody's taxes go up who's a resident, but the money that's, the extra money that's collected off of the non-resident occupied properties is distributed among them. And I understand by the way you, the way you've set it out, that that's not possible. There's this break-even point. I guess my question is, does the statute require that it be done exactly this way? As opposed to, I mean, here's what I imagine. Let's say we, we raise an extra $1 million by imposing a higher rate on...
We don't raise any additional dollars.
No, hold on, hold on. Just, could you follow, just stay with my hypothetical for a minute, okay? So let's say we have a higher rate on the 450 properties you've identified, such that there's an extra $1 million raised for those 450, 450, 450 properties. Okay, you with me so far?
No, no, because it's not just the four... No, no, because it's not just the 450. I, those are, those are the people that don't get the exemption.
All right, but here, let me just, I'm trying to think outside the box a little bit. Okay, so let me start again. So let's say we take those 450 properties. We impose a different rate than what it is now. It's higher. Okay? That raises additional revenue for those 450 properties. Are you following me so far?
I don't believe we're going down a path that is of any...
I know, but, but I just want to make sure you understand what I'm talking about. And then, so with that $1 million, if that money could be distributed in some form or fashion to the residential owners, so that, so much, so that the relief that they're getting is not so much by exempting a certain portion of the value, but simply by redistributing the tax revenues. I mean, I mean, I could see how we could accomplish relief for owner occupied properties without having to increase anybody's taxes because there wouldn't be that break even point. And I guess my question to you is, are you saying that that's simply not permitted by the statute?
The statute only permits a higher tax rate and it only permits an exemption for all of the qualifying properties. I mean, it's, it's very clear cut, the procedure and the steps that are, what your suggestion is outside what Chapter 59 allows.
Okay. All right, that was my question.
Any other questions?
I, it seems obvious, we had a lot of businesses and seasonal operations and this...
Pardon? Not businesses.
Well, no, I mean, but seasonal operation, like you brought, like you brought in here, investment properties and all of these things that our community doesn't have, that this would be attractive.
The sense I got from my research was that it, the example, best example I could come up with would be a community down on the Cape where in the summer they have to hire additional police, for example. And they feel that the reason for that additional expense is from the people who rent their property who are, who are either seasonal or non-owner occupied. And so they wanted to pass on the additional expense to those property owners.
Right.
And I don't believe, I mean, it's your decision, but I don't believe that that applies to our situation.
Right. It doesn't seem like there's any parallels that would make this positive.
Well, that's why there's so few communities that have adopted it.
Right. And the ones you, ones you outlined, the 13, I mean, they have all these similarities that make this advantageous to them to, to adopt this.
I believe that's the case, yes.
Yeah. I guess the, the last part, what you were suggesting, you know, this notion of a town that's got additional costs associated with summer population, I mean, that's kind of a policy decision. I mean, if a town just flat out wanted to favor owner occupied properties versus not, non-owner, non-owner occupied properties, I mean, like in Washington DC, I used to live there, that's exactly what they did. It wasn't because of additional costs, but I, I mean, so I guess, to me, that, that's what I'm, so I'm, now I'm stumbling over to get. To me, the downside of what you're describing is that you have higher taxes for even the owner occup, for at least some of the owner occupied properties.
After a lot of it, yeah.
Right. So, so why, so I guess why, could you explain, why did you use the example of the summer community town?
Because when I called the, this individual, Tony Rashes, at the Department of Resilience...
Yeah.
I was trying to research, what was the genesis of this legislation? And I couldn't find any good examples. And he came up with that, it was probably that either they found some additional expenses or they decided to tax people who had no vote. And that's, I mean, I couldn't find anything in my research to, to support the rationale.
I mean, I guess, I guess that kind of makes sense. I mean, if you had a place on the Cape, you had a lot of richer people who would be above the break even point. So they, well...
It's a, yeah, it's a policy decision. You want to tax people differently, that's all.
Right. Okay.
Paul?
Thank you. I'm not sure why we're having this discussion. I, but anyway, I really think if we're going to start talking at the board level and I, and I've, this has been mentioned time and again of rental properties in town, I think you tend, you need to be a little bit careful and do more on the board of our homework because you'll find that sometimes people can't sell their homes so they convert it into a rental property because they can't get the price that they want. And I don't know what gives us the right to all of a sudden start taxing people who have a house that they own in Long Meadow as a rental property. I mean, I, I, the issues is, I think there's more than enough money that goes around with the certification of free cash of over $1.8 million. We obviously are not wanting for tax revenue. And I, I don't know if we have our priorities straight to where we start talking about a split tax rate for homeowners and keeping a, and I, I just don't know why we're having this, this is not at you, I'm talking about, for the board, why we're having this discussion now and why we, we tend to all of a sudden have started over the last year or two trying to single out people that own a home in Long Meadow that are renting it out. I, I think we're getting into areas of which we don't know what we're talking about. And again, I think how you have more than enough money for projects is probably do better budgeting and maybe not spend all the money when it's in your hand. And I think that is more of a discussion than splitting tax rates for homeowners. And I'm just, I'm disappointed that we're even talking about it when there's other issues at hand that we probably should have delved, delved a little bit more into.
Mark?
I'm interested in reading all, all the stuff you submitted, but is it fair to say, and this is leading the witness here, but is it fair to say that in your, in an effort to put in a semi or quasi or pseudo, I think pseudo is the right word, split tax rate so that people who don't live in town pay a different tax rate, an unintended consequence based on the law is that residents who have higher value homes also may pay higher taxes than they would have without that? Is that what your analysis was?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So it not only does it, it impact the quote unquote non-residents, but it can also impact those residents who pay above, I guess, above the, the mean property tax value?
Correct.
Right, okay. Thank you. Yeah, I agree, there's no, I'm not interested in pursuing this.
Any other comments with the board?
Okay. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Very informative presentation. Let's see, Stephen, I guess we're down to having Mike come in. Do you think he's going to be every 4:00, 7:30?
I don't know.
Okay. I mean, I didn't know if you had communication with him.
I had not had communication with him.
I guess we have an option. We, we have no other business to, to show tonight before we get to talk with Mike. Does any board member have anything if they want to discuss?
You want to go to subcommittees?
Yeah, you're right, Marie, we did do the subcommittees, I'm sorry. So, subcommittee reports.
Well, I'm going to have a report, I just have a question. Our subcommittee did the two things you requested of us. Is there another thing you wanted to ask us to review and analyze?
I...
Because we're not going to meet till we hear from our chair.
Okay, I certainly, I would certainly take that under advisement and get back with you. I don't have one on the tip of my tongue.
Did we ever vote on the naming policy?
No.
No. No, it's still, we, we got it up and then it got confused. I think we'll write it to throw that on next agenda to get it back out here. We thought, we thought there was going to be a lot more talk tonight than it's ended up being. Then why not, if there's no other business, why don't we go temporary adjournment until Mike shows up and, or do you want to go ahead and give him a quick call?
I'll try and get him a quick call.
Yeah, give him a quick call.
Meanwhile, you can just...
We can go watch the school committee do their thing.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the school committee is, does have a meeting tonight, or they're having a special...
This was called great TV.
Right, this is great TV. This is when you really test your mettle.
Yeah, we did talk about the energy committee.
Yeah.
Why don't you?
I can tell what's going on with the energy committee. And I have to say, thank you to Kim King, she did a fabulous job. She got together the, the group that audited the town and when Robin Crosby was here and we replaced a lot of the light fixtures and the lights and we brought down the energy costs in town, she brought them around to look at the school side. And they came and they gave her a proposal that calculated so much savings per year within their budget. And it really is a fascinating proposal and the town, the school committee is going ahead with it and I'm very excited about that. He's also going back to look at the townwide properties to see if there's anything that could just sort of boost us into the next step. And so we're waiting to hear from him on that, which I think is really important. Stephen and I attended the Pioneer Valley Planning Electrical Aggregation.
Electricity Aggregation.
Yeah. Which was a fascinating talk, but, and the energy committee is going to go look at it because I think it would be something very valuable to the town and will bring back a proposal to you. But what I thought was really important was at the end of the meeting, Stephen spoke and talked about electrical costs coming down the road. And as we all know, I think its national grid has gone up 70, 37%. And so we had all these really smart people in the room that deal with this for a living from several parts of the country. And we talked about where do we see electrical costs going the next few years in the Northeast? And it was not a very pretty picture between the pipeline issues, our nuclear power plants coming down, the cost of electricity they were expecting to really be going up. So I think it's even more important for us to look and where we can do our savings. We're also looking at solar and looking at possibly doing some RFPs for solar, though unfortunately, all those solar subsidies are really a little bit, could be closed out or not too much is available as it used to be available. I think we still have on the table, Mark, your proposal that you made several years ago about if we do move the DPW having a solar field there, and I think as your analysis was a couple of years ago, is still right on that we really can't do it on one of our landfills. And that's really our, our next, our best bet for a true large solar field will be down at that location, which will probably include part of the recycling. But I just wanted to take this moment to say, Kim King did a fabulous job and that was a lot of work to get that audit together.
Marie, that, that study, because I was working with, at the time, with, to get that done, there were two important components to that. One was that the work was subsidized by Western Mass Electric. And the other thing was the cost of making the changes to, I mean, placed a lot of ballasts, a lot of lights, a lot of bulbs, was, was no capital. Instead, it was invested by Womiko and we actually paid it out over, I'm sure it's paid off by now, over a period of time that was around 15 to 20 months, depending on the building, through our, through our electric bill. So I'm not sure that, I'm sure the analysis is still valid and doing the analysis is valid, but when we did it for the town side, we had all kinds of incentive payments that made it truly worth our while. We were getting down to 18-month paybacks, kinds of things, and without those incentives, you may find different things this time around.
We do have the incentives in here. In fact, I have the proposal here, if you want to look at it, you can make some comparison. I think the payback time is a little longer though. I think it's like two and a half years, but it's a very large substantial. And again, it's, does, DPW would not have to be doing this work. They come in, they do the work and, and it's 0% and it's over a payback time. But I think it probably mirrors what you did before, but probably not as generous as you probably received.
Yeah, Paul, Paul had mentioned something and he's, he's likely right. I know you started off on this energy, you kind of informally, you were meeting with a couple of people, and it looks like the thing is starting to build some statue and under it. And as I say, Paul had asked, he said, well, what's that energy committee? And he's right, that energy committee's never really been formed or a subcommittee of the board. And I think we likely ought to formalize that relationship now so that, because it sounds like you're getting into a lot more stuff, so why don't I, Mike's going to be here in a couple of minutes, so why don't we put this on the next, next agenda to talk about this thing? And so the board's fully brought up to speed on what's been going on and...
Well, you might want to look back at the June minutes because I remember bringing it up, saying we really should make this a formal committee. And I think something was said, it might have been casual, saying, well, this is now formal and you're on it. So you might want to just make sure that we, we're not repeating.
Okay. Well, I'll double check because I, I didn't think we'd ever formalize it, but we may have. You figure it was in the June meeting?
Uh, June, yeah.
June. This year?
This year. Because I had talked about it in May.
Since I've been sitting here?
Right. Because I said I'm a little uncomfortable moving forward until we really formalize this because there is a lot of work that's being done in this and that was discussed at a meeting.
Okay. It'll be on the agenda hopefully for next, next meeting.
Can I just follow up with a question from Marie? Now, you had mentioned something about a solar field not being appropriate for the DPW.
No, for the landfill. Right now, the, the best subsidy's out there right now and what Governor DeVault-Patrick is emphasizing is solar fields only on landfills. They do not want them put on open land. So I believe Mark already looked into whether we could put it on our landfills. I pulled out the maps and I looked to see where we were. And again, the issue is, and I did speak to a man, a solar guy, and he said you need to be within 800 feet of a special type of power strip, which we're, we're much farther than the 800 feet.
And our landfill is down Pondside Driveaways?
Yeah.
Marie, just a correction, that, it was, there were additional incentives from the state if your solar field went on a closed landfill. And the incentives were very, very generous at, at the time. We went through the work, Alex, and, and what we found was that the tie into the grid, which is what Marie's indicating, is, is actually at our sewer pumping station. So, you know, you're right, down Pondside Road, almost a mile over to our electrical, you know, sewer pumping station, kind of broke the, broke the back of the finances of the project. But if the current DPW yard became an available site, that's just prime, you, you get a different set of, of incentives, but in the ensuing four years, all the incentives have changed anyway. But you get a different set of incentives, but you don't end up with this huge financial burden of running a major power line a mile long that, that, you know, that we otherwise would have. And so there's some indication it might be worthwhile to put it...
What about that farmland that's in behind?
Conservation land.
You can't use that.
They discourage on open land. It's openly discouraged. Why? I don't know. A few places have done it.
But I mean, it's, I mean, yeah, have you ever driven down I-91, I mean, I-90, there's that huge solar field where there used to be a golf course? I mean, so, I mean, it sounds like, at least they concluded that the incentives...
It wasn't conservation land.
Oh, I see.
Conservation is different from open, open space.
I understand. So conservation, you...
I mean, Agawam took a, a old driving range and converted it to a solar field.
So when you're saying conservation land, that, that's telling me that it would be not a permitted use?
Correct. That's what the Conservation Commission told us.
Like it would be just flat out prohibited.
Right, that's what, our Conservation Commission has said that to us in the past.
And the other issue is that's a flood plain. And I, when I did speak to the solar guy, he says, well, they sort of prefer non-flood planes. And so that's why the DPW, not all of it, would be available in the recycling center. But at, at least I think it's worth it to look into, but we have to have the next step of, in the DPW project before we could even consider that step.
I'd like to thank the boards for doing this wonderful job of filling in.
Add, add living?
Yeah, the add living that we needed. Shame we didn't have a bigger news story to keep repeating. And now we have before us our town moderator and we're going to move into the warrant discussion. Do you want to...
Well, I'd just like to thank the moderator for being willing to adjust the schedule to come down here a little bit early. I appreciate that. And just, town meeting is Tuesday, November 18th at 6 o'clock, I believe it starts at 6?
7.
Or is it 7?
7. Yeah, 7 PM.
I think it says it has to, has to start after 6 in my laws as well.
Yeah, 7, 7 PM.
So at 7 o'clock at the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. And that'll turn it over to the moderator to go through a process and make a presentation on, and I, I guess for me, the difference between a special town meeting and an annual town meeting, I know it'd be helpful for me, I know the board's interested in hearing that.
Well, I haven't, you know, I haven't gotten a copy of the warrant, so I haven't really, I don't even know how many articles there are on the warrant. I'll be asking the selectmen's office.
Selecting is on.
Yeah, he's got.
That's what we had to be set up. There aren't, there aren't usually at these, whether it's the annual town meeting or the special town meeting, I, usually these sessions here are usually used to determine, you know, what particular issues coming up with any particular articles. For example, whether there's going to be any changes in any, in any of the articles. I understand that some of the planning board articles, the wording may change somewhat. The, again, I haven't, I haven't seen the articles themselves, but my understanding is that, you know, if it's just minor changes in the wording, that that could be, you know, the warrant merely seems to, is there to inform the town meeting. And so that, you know, if there are any changes, they can incorporate those into the main motion. If it's a, if it's a significant change in the article, then they would have to, you know, the, I imagine that the article is quite lengthy, as I understand it. And so the point from a parliamentary procedure is, is whether or not it changes the scope of the article or whether the article can be moved and seconded with just the minor changes that the speaker would point out to the town meeting so that they know, that they know what article and what they're voting on. But if you change the scope of the article, then you have to move it as you're going to change the article, so long as it, you're not talking about a planning board article and it ends up being, being something like a money article, for example. So the scope of the article, so that's, that's about all that I know, or all that I've been told about the town meeting. I understood that this, this meeting was going to be at seven thirty tonight and I was planning on going, being here at seven thirty. So I apologize if.
This was a, an anomaly. We figured it was likely to be nine thirty, but we got through it about twenty after six.
They wore a shirt that's not ironed.
Yeah, this was totally out of the ordinary. And you're right, I was at the recent planning board and they're basically talking very minor changes except one article there. They had a definition of family in here and they've rewritten it, so they're going to read another definition, but the article stays the same, just the definition of the family.
And I think they had announced that they intended to distribute their, their wording at town meeting. They did not make an attempt to incorporate into the article that was closed by the select board. So we do, we have been communicating with them and that's correct. And I would say the intent of the article is the same, just slightly different word choices.
For the benefit of the moderator and all of us, really, there are a few articles that require two-thirds vote, which.
Zoning, are those the zoning articles?
Well, stabilization fund.
Oh, I see.
Which is Article Five. And. That's a stabilization fund article, yeah. And then the zoning, zoning articles, which are twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
So those are all two-thirds vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And seventeen.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm working on October 27th.
Been rearranged.
It's been rearranged, yeah. There's only one citizen petition on the warrant.
I'm sorry?
Only one citizen petition on the warrant.
It's always the last one.
Yeah, last one, yeah.
And there's a simple majority. Article eighteen?
Yeah.
I usually get in the final, in the final version of the warrant, along with the explanation below the article is the majority vote required, whether it's a four fifths vote or whether it's a two thirds or a, but I can, I can work that out. Are all of these articles being moved? Is there any article that's going to be withdrawn, if we're aware of?
And the version you have may have on Article Eight strike through?
Yes.
That is, that article was approved, so that article is in, is in fact part of the warrant. Now, it just happens before you go here tonight.
Well, I just request that you provide me with a, you know, by email and usually get a copy.
I honestly thought that that happened, I apologize. I'm surprised to hear that you haven't got a copy of the warrant, actually. I'll have to check that on my end.
I don't anticipate the, with, I'm just finding, it's eighteen articles, but you never know how long the town meeting is going to, I mean, articles, zoning articles, as you, as you well know, can take up a great deal of time and debate and so forth. So even though there's only eighteen articles, that's no bellwether on how long the town meeting is going to last. I don't anticipate, I don't think there is anything unusual about this town, special town meeting that we would have on the annual or even prior special town meetings that I'm aware of.
I just had a point of procedure. On Article Twelve, that's the zoning article?
It's now Article Thirteen, yeah. It's Article Twelve on what he's got, but it's Article Thirteen on the electronic version we got.
Which article?
It's about the shops.
Oh, that's Article Thirteen on this version.
Okay. All right. So the proposer of this zoning law change is the business of the shops. And I don't know whether they're actual town residents or not, but normally, the deliberation is among town residents and you exclude people from speaking if they're not a town resident. Now, if the company is not a town resident or the person is not a town resident who's representing, how, how does that get proposed?
A resident of the town has to request of the moderator that that person, I believe the, the resident will have to move the article and have it properly moved and seconded. And then the resident would ask the moderator for permission for the individual who's behind the article to, to speak. Now, what has happened in the past, in the most recent past, is that only people who are residents of the town have the right to be on the town meeting floor. There's a designated section in the, in an area of the, of the gymnasium where, where citizens or non-visitors to the town meeting can sit. They are not permitted to be with the, they may not be permitted to be on the floor because then you will have people saying that they're on the floor and they're not residents and so forth. So it's, I think I've made it clear that only residents of the town can be on the floor. Now, they, and the moderator will be certainly liberal in allowing that person to speak. I know we had that same situation with the Hamden Bank situation up there on, when they were looking for the zone change.
Shake a Road.
Shake a Road. So the way it worked there was that the individual, it was moved and seconded, the individual came on the floor to explain what the, what the motion was all about. I believe I permitted him to take questions from any of the town meeting members and then he was requested to retire from the floor and that's what will happen here.
I think it happened at the last meeting when there was a non-resident architect who was allowed to speak concerning the proposed new senior center.
That's right.
But somebody, but I'm taking from what you're saying that somebody who is a resident actually has to move the article?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then that person would ask for the non-resident who's really behind it to speak on its behalf?
To speak to the town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess there's a question from my mind. Article Thirteen, which is the way it's going to be listed, it was placed on the warrant because of the action by the zoning board of appeals and the planning commission. And in fact, that, this action was sent to them without, I'm trying to think of the right wording, with an adverse recommendation from the select board. So the question is, if, if no one from the select boards, or maybe no one from the town, seeks to place this in, on the floor, what happens?
Well, there's a, who's the sponsor of the article?
I asked that, the chair of the town manager.
Grove Properties. That would have to be the, at this point, I understand it came to the planning board. They sponsored this thing coming out. They ran through their entire process, they had a public meeting.
So then.
They're not the sponsor of it, though.
Well, if any.
The sponsor.
Did they vote to approve it?
Well, no, I mean, they, they were not the sponsor, but the planning board had to hold hearings, but they.
Did they vote to approve it?
But that didn't.
Yeah.
They voted to approve it?
Yeah. They voted to last meeting to approve it.
All right. I mean, but that's not, I mean, they didn't draft it. I mean, they.
No, it was, it was drafted in concert with them, it was presented to them. This is mostly, this is just the legal definition and they were given a presentation. There's a fairly long presentation, not a long one, but there was a presentation that went on with this when the developer met with the planning and when they also met with the select board.
Well, that point should be clarified prior to the town meeting to make sure if it's not the planning board who placed this article on the warrant, then we need to find out who did because if nobody moves the article, you can't take action on the article and.
The planning. The motion on the article is a prerequisite to town meeting action.
Correct.
And the planning board, any planning board member, anybody could make, any resident could make the motion.
The language for the article did come from the chair of the planning board.
Right.
We're back to where we were an hour and a half ago, but instead of the issue being something by the, the community preservation committee, the issue may be something by the planning board who put something on the, who got something put on the warrant and nobody's quite sure how it ended up on, on the warrant and who sponsored it and whether the select board.
Well, they, they came to the select board initially and we passed it to the planning.
But under the, under the, at least in my mind, because we had the obligation to pass it over to the planning board.
Well, I'm not sure if we had the obligation.
Well, it certainly is the impression I had at the time.
I think, it's the planning, under Chapter Forty-Eight, Section Five, the board of selectmen is merely a conduit to receive a proposed zoning bylaw amendment and then pass it on to the planning board for action. So it's on, it's on the warrant, so it's, and I'm assuming that the property owner or somebody from the planning board is, would have orchestrated this and make the motion.
But, but, I apologize, Mr. Martell, because you're away, away from the microphone, but, but, you know, and, and the warrant's closed and the warrant's completed, but now we go back and say, you know, if, if in fact a majority of the select board did not seem to at the time support this project, or this rezoning, excuse me, this rezoning, but passed it to the planning board with an adverse recommendation because there was an obligation we needed to, was the plan, was the select board then obligated to vote it onto the, onto the warrant?
Well, I think that was the subject of a discussion between me and Mr. Grant.
Right.
The last time around, and notwithstanding that discussion, you voted to put it on the warrant. I assume it was a three to two vote, wasn't it?
It was on your recommend, it was with your opinion that we had to do it.
Yes.
And I disagreed with that for many of the same reasons that included my memo.
Right.
But, I mean, one of the reasons, I was the person that moved at the time to, to pass it on with the unfavorable recommendation, so there could be no question that we were placing our stamp of approval on it and that we were merely, as you say, acting as a conduit. And I do believe that we had to do that because it said shall do it. So, I mean, I guess the question remains, you know, who, who actually does the motion? I mean, and I guess what you're saying is anybody could do it.
Yeah, I mean.
Who's a resident?
I can't imagine that the planning board, having approved this article, would not have someone willing to make the motion. Just doesn't make sense.
No.
And another thing to remember is that the article cannot be voted on without first
hearing the report of the planning board. That applies to all zoning bylaw amendments and the report doesn't have to be anything more elaborate than having the chairman of the planning board or someone else from the planning board report that the planning board voted three to two to support this article or whatever it was.
Paul?
I just, Mark mentioned it. You guys voted four to one to close the warrant. It's done. The fact that you were having a discussion about a particular article and who's going to move it or not isn't, isn't a concern of the boards because it's not a select board article, just like the CPC article is not a select board article. And we can go and keep dancing, but the time to address it was the time, at the time we were talking about warrant articles. And I, I know it's early in the night and maybe we just want to wait for another three hours before we get out of here, but at some point in time, it's voted, it's closed, it's over. I don't know what we're trying to prove right now by taking an unfavorable stance on it or whatever it is, but it's done. I think what we're having the discussion here tonight with the moderator and the town council has traditionally been, are there any articles we need to be aware of, are there any blowups on the agendas in a two thirds vote and so forth? And I, and quite frankly, what I like to ask is that we move along. Because the discussion is moved based on the fact the board already voted for the warrant and signed it. There's four signatures on that warrant, it's done, unless you want to reopen it.
I don't think there's any desire to reopen the warrant.
Well, then stop beating the horse that we're not even riding into the town meeting. I just, I think it's silly at this point to start talking about who's going to move it. Just move on and talk about what we talked about with the moderator and council.
I believe the moderator asked who is going to move this issue, if I recall correctly, and the, the discussion pursued after that.
I don't think it was the moderator who brought it up.
He, can I, he asked the question, where did the, the question was asked, I don't even know if it was the moderator, but the question was asked, where did this article come from? We clarified, it came from the planning. The language was emailed to the office. A member of the planning board was here at the meeting to answer all questions from the select board on the articles. It was clearly, clearly showing ownership over the zoning change as well as the other bylaw change revisions that are on the warrant. So I think you're right, Paul, it's, it's settled.
Any other questions by the select board or the moderator while he's here? Again, things always come up at the last minute at town meeting. We're going to be in the gymnasium and we'll just try to move things along as quickly as possible. But I, you know, this idea of, you know, who, I, over the years, I have a housekeeping rules that I put in the, on the back of the warrant, which I always have town meeting take a look at. The housekeeping rules, I think, need to be a little adjusted somewhat because, you know, the issue of, of a speaker before the town meeting is a very sensitive one with town meeting. They certainly don't want somebody from outside the town coming in and speaking without their permission. And so I've been very sensitive to the fact that the non-resident. And so I've been very sensitive to the fact that the non-residents that come into the town looking for something have to get the town meeting's permission, which I will liberally give. I'll allow the, in this particular article, if there's somebody that, the planning board or some other resident asks the moderator to speak, I'm gonna allow him to speak in the same way that I've done it before, where he's, he can make a presentation, so long as he lets me know, or the person of the board lets me know that they need a little time to perhaps set up a PowerPoint, that sort of thing. It's, the whole idea is to move the town meeting along to get us in and out as quickly as possible, because I know that's what the town meeting is interested in. Getting the town's business done as quickly and as business-like a manner as possible, and that's, that's what I... So, the individual will be allowed to make a presentation. I'd like to know how long it's going to be. I'll allow that person to take questions from the floor, but after the questions are over, he's to retire from the floor and go back to the area where the visitors sit.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
The only question I have is, you know, the moderator here then is, do we anticipate any presentations from the town side or anything else besides? I would imagine that the shops are gonna make a presentation of what it might look like or whatever, but do we have any from the town side that we anticipate presenting?
There may be some information presented on the DPW article. I have no idea if it's gonna be PowerPoint or verbal. I don't know if the planning board is gonna wanna make a PowerPoint about their articles. And there was one other that I thought, possibly the tennis courts. I think, you know, the question's been raised here even tonight about how did the project get to where it was? You know, why are we back at town meeting looking for additional CPA funds? And we certainly owe an explanation on that, and I would coordinate that with this, with the CPC.
So you could have a couple sticky.
It always happens. You never can predict it ahead of time.
Mr. Moderator, for what it's worth, the ar, the warrant is organized where there's some of the, it's mostly financial articles or fiscal articles, monetary ones up front, and then it switches over to bylaw changes, so we have them kind of segmented that way.
Sure. In, in looking at, for Article thirteen, for example, the legal description, so long as the legal description is the same as, as printed in the warrant, you know, we can dispense with reading as part of the article, the legal description. This would be apparently, I would allow the, the article to be moved and seconded, and so long as the description was the same in the warrant as the one that was, we could dispense with that.
How about some of these other zoning things? Is there gonna be any reason to read everything on them?
It depends. I, I think so. I, I think it's not on our...
Typically, you've allowed a motion to move that we amend the, we amend Article, Article five, chapter eight hundred of the zoning bylaw as printed, printed in article whatever.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I don't, so long as the, the description in the article is the same as printed in the warrant, because that's what the, the townspeople are looking at on their warrant. If there are any changes in that, then I would wanna know about it.
Okay. We already know there'd be some wording changes, some very minor wording changes.
I, I think that the planning board will notify the moderator directly of those. I don't think, we're not gonna have any language changes on town generated ones. The planning board has already noted, has already announced that they're gonna be giving out revised articles at town meeting.
Right. I guess what I was trying to get at is, are we gonna have to read that entire thing and then go back and put this scuffle of changes in?
The answer, speaking for the moderator, I think the answer is no. Does that, do you, you agree with that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So what would it be, adopted or recommended as such with the following changes? Is that the protocol?
Move the article, move the first paragraph to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, and then, you know, Article sixteen, to see if, they would read this to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town by striking subsections parentheses one into parentheses and two, parentheses two into parentheses of Article four, section E, you know, non-conforming building and uses subsection one A that now reads. So they can dispense with reading the meat of the, of the, of the motion, and so long as no one has an objection, it's as printed in the warrant, and it'll be moved and seconded as such.
The motions will be distributed, Steve, you'll distribute the motions like ahead of, at least a few days before the meeting, so that moderator and I can, can look at the proposed way you're gonna deal with some of the longer articles.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dan. If there's no other business that any board member can think of, I'm gonna entertain a motion to the chair.
So moved.
And seconded? All on table?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will see you for our next meeting on November seventeenth at seven o'clock in the same room. Have a nice evening, and please go vote tomorrow.
You don't vote, you can't vote.